Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. A quorum is present and the meeting is here for a call to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearings will be opened by reading legal notices into the record. Applicants will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the board. Board members may then ask questions of the applicant. Once the board has concluded its questioning, we would open matters to public hearing for comment. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair and individuals to be called upon. As far as our agenda items tonight, the first matter before the board is a request for site plan approval for the Bernie Cooper Park. It looks like lot 97832. And ready here from the applicant?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair. My name is Holly Jones. I am here with Brian Kuchar, who is the project engineer. I am representing the Conservation Commission to present the plans for the Bernie Cooper Riverfront Park to you all tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I pulled stuff on the TV. Ooh, I jumped to the bottom. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with, a little bit, with the future Bernie Cooper Riverfront Park. We, it's in South Norwood, right at the ends of St. Paul, St. Joseph, St. John, and Fole and Ave, close to the Volsch School, Elliott Park, and across the street, the Endeen Park, and the Copley. Can you all see the screen over here? Should I tilt it more towards you? See that a little bit better?
Okay, that's clear.
Yeah. It is also bordered on two sides by water with Hawes Brook and the Nippon City River. So the town purchased this property in 2019 using community preservation funds and started on a planning process to envision what neighbors and other stakeholders wanted to see in a park there. That consisted of several community meetings. It was during the height of the pandemic, so we had several remote meetings and one outdoor in-person meeting along with a survey. We've also had a number of community cleanups, which is this picture on the right with both the Trails Committee and the Nippon City River Watershed Association. And this is what we came up with for the concept as part of that design process. And the more finished plans that we'll be presenting haven't changed that much from this original concept, which included keeping the area in a very natural state so that it felt like a wooded walk, but with pathways that were stabilized soil that would be accessible to people using wheelchairs or strollers or other mobility aids. In terms of site features, it will also include two overlooks going right up to the edge of the river, one on sort of each side of the Nippon City on the site, along with two boardwalks. All of the amenities that you might expect in a park like benches, picnic tables, signage, sort of marked entrances with monumentation, as well as close to the Volsch School, an outdoor classroom, and a nature lab play area.
Holly, can I ask, because, you know, I'm directionally challenged, where's the Volsch when I'm looking at this?
Yeah.
Down here at the bottom, right?
To the right.
It's, it's up in the top right corner. So Elliott Park is, is on the right-hand side, and then right above Elliott Park is the Volsch School, and then Washington Street.
With the circle, is that the driveway?
No, it's off, off the perimeter.
No, that's out to a certain position.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
It's the Volsch up here.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
Not at all. These are a couple of views looking down and across from the river. 84 Moore Street is across the river, and these were taken in winter. There's quite a bit of undergrowth there currently that makes the sightlines difficult right now during the summer. There's also some existing conditions on the site that are a little bit disturbed. So going back up to the overview, the side that's closer to Hawes was formerly a parking lot and was, had actually asphalt that now trees have grown up through. And so the proposal is to selectively remove some of that asphalt, but not remove it wholesale because it would entail substantial amount of clearing and earth disturbance. So that will be selectively removed to enable the trail to go through and to enable a greater diversity of plantings where it's currently almost a monoculture of catalpic trees. So all this brings me to the trigger for site plan review, which is the parking and impervious surfaces. So this is the existing conditions plan. So as you can see, there's currently cul-de-sacs at the end of St. Joseph and St. John, and there's no formalized parking spaces. The proposal is to remove those cul-de-sacs and add formal parking. On this map, it's a little bit hard to see, but the, there's a light blue outline showing the outline of the existing cul-de-sacs. So there, you can see, there's, the proposal reduces the amount of impermeable surface. It removes asphalt in favor of having these more rectangular pole-in parking areas. So there's a proposal for three parking areas at the end of St. John, three as well at the end of St. Joseph, with two of those being wheelchair van accessible, and then five parallel parking spots along this easement that goes between St. Paul and St. Joseph, and those would be constructed with permeable pavers so that they're helping treat storm water and aren't contributing to additional impervious on the site. And the other parking spaces were proposed to be regular asphalt just to make them a little bit more wheelchair accessible. So this is our proposed conditions plan currently. So it has all the features I mentioned, like the riverfront overlooks, nature play area, and outdoor classroom. It also has, at the end of each of the streets, a bioinfiltration area to treat storm water that's coming off the street, which currently is sheet flowing into the park without treatment. So, and here we have an overview of the planting plan. So as I mentioned, disturbance is going to be limited in the park. There's not going to be any sort of wholesale clearcutting of trees. Where there is plans for replanting includes near the entryways to try and create sort of an inviting, open area going into the park and ease that transition. The plantings within those bio soils for stormwater that I mentioned. And then there's a proposal for meadow plantings and bank stabilization. One of the meadow plantings being in the corner of the confluence between Hawes and the Nippon City, where one of those riverfront overlooks is, and then the other one being along this border with Elliott Park, again, in order to ease that transition between Elliott Park and, and make sort of an inviting entryway into the Bernie Cooper Riverfront Park. And I'll add, some of the planting plans are proposed to be sited in field. So there will be as well some native species plantings throughout the site that will be located during construction as literal openings become available. So right now it's heavily canopied, but if, if there's an area where trees have to be removed and it opens up canopy and presents an opportunity, then there will be new plantings put in there in order to try and diversify the existing seed bank. And the plan is to have sort of little pockets of plantings like that throughout the park so that, again, those, and actually to, to put, for the first few years, fences around them to protect them from deer so that we can really cultivate a few little pockets of healthy, strong native vegetation that can, can then spread out throughout the full park. There was a survey of the site to locate any sort of outstanding trees to make sure that we weren't trying to build the paths through any of the particularly exciting trees on the lot, including, there's some really giant cottonwood trees, for instance, there that we're, we're going to make sure all are saved. So this is Joe Barrett, for those who don't know Joe, helping out with flagging those trees, I think this was last March, along with Hannah Carlson, who's our landscape And I'm not going to go through this slide, but this is the summary of the proposed planting plans for all of those different areas, the entryway plantings, the bio soil plantings, the meadow plantings, and so on. So it's all native species proposed and a mix of plugs of herbaceous material along with trees and shrubs. And there is also accompanying the planting plan a plan for invasives management as well, which the invasives management plan sort of covers potentially more than what will end up happening for invasive management on the site, but there is a plan to, at least for several years into the future, and hopefully in an ongoing way, work every year on, on managing some of those invasive vines and invasive sort of very, very bushy undergrowth that currently make it hard to navigate through the park. So that is the presentation, and myself and Brian are available for questions.
Joe?
I just had a question on the invasive management. Who handles that?
Yeah, so...
Is that CONCOM?
It will be the CONCOM. The hope is to use the, the funds that are allocated for construction for the first several years of an invasives contract with whoever is, is contracted to do the plant work on the site. So potentially for maybe the first three years, we would have a, a contract for sort of ongoing invasives with that company. And then after that, the Conservation Commission would have to work to sort of fill that gap with a mix of contractors and, and volunteer efforts. And we have had a good amount of volunteer efforts to work on invasives in the site up through now, like I mentioned, with the Trails Committee and the Nippon City River Watershed, and also Norfolk Aggie has actually been out there to help us.
If you have volunteers, who would be in charge of saying, pull that, don't pull that, you know, this is invasive, this is not invasive, you know?
For the most part, I would suspect it would be our conservation planner, Carly Rockland, who would be out there helping with that sort of plant ID. What myself and the Nippon City River Watershed Association have done in the past is often we've focused on removing invasive vines because it's sort of high payoff. And so we'll lead a little workshop at the beginning to show people, here's what a bittersweet vine looks like, and that's the one we want to go after, here's what a poison ivy vine looks like, here's what a grapevine looks like, in order to just familiarize people with those skills.
As far as this whole situation, you know, it's been a long time coming, and there's all the different phases. Where are we and when do we expect to be able to use?
We're in the permitting phase. But we are pretty done with the, the permitting plan set, and Brian might be able to speak to this better than, than myself, but our, our contractors are working on putting together bid docs and, and those sorts of things. And the plan is to go out to bid in January with the expectation of having a contractor ready to start that work in early spring of 2024, work on it through the summer. We are anticipating that potentially the boardwalks might be built by volunteers, so that would be sort of a phased approach where most of the construction is completed sort of midsummer, and then we have, have the boardwalks in the, the late summer and, and fall of next year.
Thank you.
Debbie? I remember years ago when we were working with Buck on this, up at the 20-foot wide right-of-way, there's a garage that's a, can you see it?
It's what, it's right next to St. John, right?
Right next to, well, it's in, right in the middle.
Okay.
Is that in the right-of-way? Is that somebody else's property? What are we doing?
Oh, yes.
Yes, yep. Between St. Joseph and St. John.
Yes, there is a garage in the right-of-way. So that is not part of the park, that is part of the right-of-way. So as of now, I'm leaving that to the Board of Selectmen to determine what course of action they may want to take, if any, about that existing garage.
The other question I had was, there's a tank, a big giant concrete tank in there that never had a good smell.
Okay.
And I went down with Mr. Ryan years ago, and it wasn't working prop, what are we doing with that?
Yeah, so there is, it's called a siphon at the end of sort of this middle path here.
Okay, I see it.
And that is where the sewer pipe dives underneath the river, and there's a matching siphon on the other side of the river. So currently we have the, the pathway sort of winding around that siphon. We have consulted with the MWRA.
What does it do? It's full of tires, it smells horrible. I mean, there's tire, this is last year, not this year.
The MWRA has been out there in the last few years and made a couple of different improvements, and it doesn't smell nearly as bad as it used to. There may be days where it's still smelly, but it is significantly better. We have gotten permission from them, from the MWRA to paint it or, you know, do other potentially beautifying things around it, but the plan for the most part is really just to leave it be.
But is it, is it draining something that's going into the river? Because it was really, no? Because it kind of, the river kind of leaks over into it, and then it's, I mean, it was a little hard to navigate back there, and again, I'm lost, I don't know where it is.
Yeah, so there is a sewer easement that comes across 84 Moore, 84 Moore's, the bus lot, that cross Hawes. And that siphon is where the sewer line sort of drops in elevation in order, like it, it sort of tunnels deeper underground in order to cross the river.
Sewer line being the operative word?
Yep.
And it just seems to, okay. So somebody's dealing with that? Somebody?
It's going to continue to exist as it is now.
Right, but I mean, we're going to clean it up in the process of this? Because it's really not in the park, right?
It is in the park.
Just the sewer easement's in the park, but not that tank. Is that still in the park?
It's, it's within the park boundaries, but the pathway is sort of skirting around it.
Okay, and the little bridge that comes from where we were going to, where they're parking cars across from the space center? Remember, there's a bridge that got you to this park?
There's no...
That fight was years ago.
Right.
They were going to put cars over there, remember, and the bridge was there. What are we doing with the bridge? Is it going to stay part of the thing, or?
There is existing abutments, and the town does own both sides of Hawes Brook. We own to the middle of the Nippon City River. So there is the potential for a potential Phase 3, say, of, of this park in the future to have a bridge across. Should we secure rights from the owner of the bus lot in 84 Moore's to, to cross over to Moore Street? That's something that's under consideration.
Is the bridge still there? There was a bridge there.
There's no bridge there currently.
It's gone?
There is abutments.
Okay. And, the tank, so CPA, this is CPA funds for the acquisition of 805,000?
That is, the 805,000 is for the construction. So there were two separate phases of the CPA funding. So in 2018, the CPA and town meeting voted to allocate 300 and something thousand for the acquisition and, and concept design for the park, and then in 2021, the CPA and town meeting voted again to allocate more CPA funds along with general funds for construction. And we do have two grants as well that will be helping return some of that money back to the CPC and to the general fund.
So what's our total out of CPC now? 805, or is it 805 and 3? Is it a million two?
It's, it's a million two, thereabouts. I can, I can get back to you on the exact...
Just, just a general idea.
Yeah.
You know? Okay, that and that. I think that's it. I'm thrilled that we're having a Bernie Cooper Park. Are we going to blacktop the walkways?
No, they will...
Thank you. It's nuts.
They'll be stabilized soil, which will, is a natural material, but it will be hard and stable enough for people to be able to access with wheelchairs and to be ADA compliant.
Okay, but no hot top?
No hot top.
Natural walkways with hot top, I don't get it. Doesn't one of them buy the field, Murphy Field? We have some hot top back there, don't we? I think in a few little places. Not a lot, but a little.
I'm not sure.
It's kind of all broken up, but, okay, I think that's it. Thank you. That's it. And what, all we're doing is the parking lot, right? That's why it's coming in front of us, the parking spots?
Right, it's more than 10 parking spaces.
Okay.
Deputy took some of my questions already. So regarding the stabilizing soil for these trails, is there any anticipation of erosion when there's, there's a lot of rain or through the winter and everything? How does that get repaired? Is that part of this town budget, or who's managing that?
There is potential for erosion on the stabilized soil pathways over time. During construction, they're, they will be hopefully sloped to shed rainwater, but those will have to be revisited and unlikely resurfaced every few years. The Conservation Commission and the DPW put together a little sort of memorandum of understanding about who might be taking care of what in terms of that space moving forward. So the DPW will be taking care of things like, there's going to be trash cans at the street entrances, cleaning those, fallen trees across the paths, taking care of those. And likely will be able to take care of the stabilized soil pathways in the future, but it's possible that the, the Conservation Commission will have to hire out for that depending on, on the DPW's availability and schedule.
So, thank you. Regarding the accessible parking spaces, the line that, right-of-way, are they fully marked out stripes? Are they all for van spaces or just passengers?
I think you, you'll just need a placard to park there.
Yeah, okay, so, so there's, there's signage for it?
Yes.
And the markings on, with the striping and so forth?
Signage and stripes.
So it's nice and clear? All right, well, good.
Mr. Chair, I got one more question.
Sure.
We're doing any lighting? We're not doing any lighting?
There's no lighting proposed.
Not at the end of the street? Not in the parking lot? I know, it says, no changes to lighting, but there is a pole down there, but it's not lit.
Oh.
That was a neighbor's concern. It's, it's an old metal, it's an old pole. It's concrete, I think. Not lit. That was, again, we've been down there poking around for six, five, six years, and that, one of the neighbor's concern was when they didn't want it to be, remember, it was going to be cars, and we were trying to get it to be something other than cars. You're going to put lights down here, and I said, I got nothing, I got, the cars are going to put lights down here. So there is a pole down there, I don't know what the pole is for, but we're not putting any lights?
No.
Okay.
So that pole would be removed.
Okay. Okay, so no change in lighting?
No change. No lights proposed.
No, no questions.
All right. So, public hearing, is there any more to talk from this? Anybody, any thoughts? All right. So, motion for the board? Motion to approve? Motion to approve on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? All right. Bye, Bill.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you. All right, so...
Is there Brad up there? Hi, Brad.
Right up there, I mean.
Hi, Brad.
All right, so moving on, the next item on the agenda is a request for site, as for signs, site plan approval, 91 Central Street, the Lark Center. Is the applicant present for that?
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Cohen, and I provide administrative support for the Lark Center. And we are just looking for approval for some new signage. The Lark Center currently has a location in the Central Business District on 629 Washington Street, and they have expanded to a new location on 91 Central Street. And are looking for approval on additional signs there, a sign on the wall similar to what's there for other businesses, a 3x10 sign, as well as some acrylic dimensional letters in the awning, which is 8x92 and 1/4.
Great.
Again, very similar to what is there. We're using, I believe, an approved vendor's signogram out of Waukaw.
Right. Sarah, do we talk to the board, or do you have any input?
This is in compliance with the requirements of the bylaw. It meets the requirements for square footage. It's not to be illuminated.
No elimination.
So this is just a minor site claim.
Yep.
Great. Anybody have any questions, or are we ready to vote? Debbie?
2020 Eye Center is still there? Yes? On the right, is that sign still up there? Does anybody know?
There's an eye doctor in there. Did I go, my eye doctor's in there.
So these are not raised letters like 2020 Eye Center? I love this building, it's very, it's very deco.
I believe, it looks like from the picture that I see, honestly, it looks like there's some kind of, the acrylic dimensional letters are to the right of it, looking at the building.
I know we don't have any sign rules on this, but yours are flat, they're not raised, they're not...
Yes, no, they're flat, right, similar to what's there.
All right, okay.
So what, just to be clear, this blue sign, it says, "The Lark Center for Therapeutic Play and Learning," with the little logo on the right. Blue and white.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is that right? Yeah, it was just a little, yeah, just a tad. All right, so anybody else have any questions or concerns?
No.
No? All right, is there any motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
None.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next matter on the agenda, if, where timing is appropriate, is a A&R, an approval not required, plan Bradley Cardoso with regard to 1125 1175 Boston Providence Turnpike.
Brian? Scott? That's a fact, I refuse myself.
Oh, sure.
I'm just going to sit and watch.
Sit and watch.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
I'm Scott Turner from Invigro Partners. I'm here if you have any questions about the A&R, meets all the zoning requirements and possible, and if we simply want to just reorganize the property to accommodate the new building, so that's how the line is drawn.
Okay. Sarah, the planning department, anything to say?
No, I mean, it's fairly straightforward, it meets all the requirements of the bylaw. It assigns, you know, the buildings to their own lots versus the current configuration, which doesn't neatly align with the three separate business interests here, so.
Are there any questions to the board?
This would be a vote to endorse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This would be a vote to endorse the A&R.
Sure, so no comment? Does anybody have comments?
I've always got a comment. May I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you for being so nice to those trees all along Route 1. They're just all boxed off in little cages, it's very nice.
Oh, good.
Looks lovely.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, they're probably the best client I've ever worked with, honestly. They honestly, truly want to do the right thing, so that's how things are going.
They got little fences around them, so they don't run away.
So.
Looks great, we can't see the construction, it's great.
Any motion?
I can say something nice once in a while.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ready? So, four oh, with one abstention. Great, thank you. Sure, so when do you sign the plan?
Right after we adjourn. I'll pass it around.
Like tonight?
So we get it at your office tomorrow or this week? Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So the next agenda item is, I was in a return, is approval of the meeting minutes from June 26, 2023, and July 31, 2023.
Make a motion to approve.
Actually, I wasn't here in July 31st, so we're probably doing them in two separate votes, does that make sense?
Okay.
All right, so as far as the June 26, 2023 minutes, motion for?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you. Five oh? All right, five oh, minutes are approved. With regard to the July 31, 2023 minutes, I wasn't present at the meeting, so I don't believe I can vote on that, but.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four oh, approved. Thank you very much. All right, Sarah, do we have other business this evening?
I do believe we have some other business regarding the Planning Board's appointment to the Community Preservation Committee.
Sure.
There was a vote that was taken at the 31st Thursday meeting to nominate Debbie as the appointee. Joe Sheehan has previously served that position and was interested in reappointment. It was a late evening, and there was not a fair amount of communication between members from my office, so I believe that Debbie and Joe have discussed, and I don't know if there was a revote, but I can-
So I will, Joe and I discussed, if I say something that you don't agree with, throw something or scream out. I did not, I was not aware that Joe wanted to continue. Also, I did not ask if there was any discussion after I said, "All in favor." My fault, I did not ask for discussion. So, again, why I say that we all need to be, and my, Holly printed me up, or somebody else printed me up, the CPC rules and regs, and they're three-year terms. I get that, and there's nothing definitive about you can't continue, continue, continue. One of the things that I feel very strongly about with particularly the CPC, a however you want to say it, was, early on, seven or eight years ago, one of the arguments with getting it through Town Meeting, getting it through all the boards, was it'll be the same people on every board. And I think I've been vocal that said, "If you want to get on the board, you got to stand up and, you know, you got to volunteer people." So one of the things with the CPA is I believe that we should get new people, we get stale. And I think we should get new people in to, so we can learn something. Like if none of us ever are chairman on the Planning Board, we don't know how to be chairman. It's a learning process. So after discussing with, discussing with Joe, I would like to make a motion, am I doing that right? To, Joe would be willing to do another year on CPC, a stuck in my head. And I would make that motion to let Mr. Sheehan continue, Joe to continue being our representative. I do require, I do, I would love to ask if we could get some, every month, if we could get something, on what's going on, just basically, how much money we've got, what projects we have going, because I know people don't believe this, but I sometimes can't get out of the grocery store because people ask me questions.
So, just to be clear, you have a motion?
I have a motion.
But before we go with the motion, did we have to make any sort of specific motion vote, dealing with the prior vote?
I believe you do.
Like a motion to vacate or a motion to re-
Reconsider, a motion, I'll make the motion, if that's, first I want to ask Mr. Sheehan if this is what you want.
I do, I just, I-
I know you were chairman of the CPA.
I was chairman, and they made me chairman, and then we found out that the time ran out, was running out, and there had to be a reappointment. There was, like I said, miscommunication, perhaps.
There was.
That, I believe some said they thought I was giving it up, and it was not that at all. I'm looking forward to chair again, as I had been asked to. So I'd like to at least finish out till next June, when we go to Town Meeting.
All right, I will make, I'll make a motion to, for reconsideration, it's the end of the night, so we can, I'll make a motion for reconsideration of our vote on July 31st, I believe was the date, on the vote for the Planning Board representative on the Community Preservation Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that carries five oh, so now that that reconsideration is occurring, are there any further nominations for who should serve as the-
I will, well, I'll nominate Joe Sheehan as our representative.
Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, so, let me take a vote on the appointment.
For a one-year term, right, Joe?
Yes, or if we were going to do three, I would, I would stay right here now that I would voluntarily step down at the end of, by June, the end of June.
Yeah, and not that I don't, I have no complaints about the job, I'm glad that you like doing it, I just, I feel strongly that all, anybody on any of the boards, we need to get new people in so we can get new ideas and-
But as far as Joe's appointment, are we, as a board, going to try to clip it to a year, or do we trust that Joe will step down after his state's, or, how do you want to handle this?
I'll make, I'll change my motion to, I nominate Joe Sheehan to be our representative to, when does that year end up? When's that year?
For a year. For one year.
For one year.
But it would make sense to end it in June at this point, because-
June of 2024.
Yep.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
June of, to nominate him to be our representative until June of 2024.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, second.
So it's like ten months. All right, so there's a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. So that, was there any other further business than that, Sarah?
No, you'll see, Kristin Phelps, our CPC coordinator, did put together a brief update on the activities of the CPC. She and I discussed being able to provide more regular reports to the Planning Board, so if there's anything you'd like to see in that report, please do check in with either Kristin or I.
Great.
But you have that in your packets to review. And other than that, I have no other business.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.